Thank you. And now we're going to open a public meeting, budget hearing. Superintendent Shaker?
What I have for you in terms of tonight's packet is a preliminary budget for FY15, and you have a budget package that has budget documents and backup in it. This preliminary budget document that you have, the backup that you have, will have things change in it as we get closer to the town meeting because we're still several months from town meeting. And as you get closer, you're able to recalculate your estimates. The last and most recent estimates of anything are the most accurate. The further you are away from your projected dates, the more difficult it gets to anticipate what those expenditures might be in the following year. And again, please remember that these are all estimates for FY15. Tonight, though, we'd be certainly willing to get to that document later if people have questions about it. Tonight, though, what I'll focus on is really a summary that is in a PowerPoint that's been created, and each member should have a copy of that. Following this meeting, all of these things will be posted in public. And at the end of this presentation, you know, what I'll be asking for is for members of the community, members of our school communities, our school councils, our parents, to give us input on this document in terms of priorities for FY15. We'll be doing all of that work internally and deliberating over all of these expenditures. Last month, you saw quite a bit of information about our student achievement and our student achievement data. There are areas there of great concern to us as we continue to try to improve student achievement in Abington. And so our budget priorities should be reflective of those achievement areas that we're most concerned. And those discussions will take place over the weeks and months to follow. And so this preliminary budget begins with a $22.2 million proposal for the Abbotton Public Schools, and it represents an effort on our behalf to try to provide the best educational environment possible for the students of Abington. Once we get into this, you'll see that the things that you'll see requested here in this budget are about improving the educational environment and the achievement for our students. It's obvious, but I think that that needs to be stated. A backdrop for this, though, is that the FY15 preliminary budget proposal, if you go back five years, our current budget, rather FY14, if you go back five years to 2009, the difference between our current operating budget and the budget we had in 2009 is an overall increase of 2.4 percent. So in five years, if you take all of those budget cycles, the ups and the downs, the total increase over a five-year period of time is 2.4 percent. The costs of education have risen much higher than 2.4 percent over that five-year period of time. Annually, in Massachusetts schools, they see an average increase in special education of approximately 20 percent, increase in special education of approximately 20 percent So the rise in cost in education compared to the rise in our budget over five years, obviously, there's a disconnect there, and it has meant the equivalent of 33 positions in Abington. So there were 33 more people working here in 2009 than there are today in 2014. And at the same time, costs in special education have gone up. And so the service that we provide our general education population in terms of programs that we offer, in terms of class sizes, has decreased. And you saw that in the achievement data that we provided to you the other day. We need to improve in this area. So this budget uses that as the backdrop, those factors. The following are of major concern. I mentioned class size at the elementary level, the elimination of significant amounts of high school and middle school class sections and programs, and then fees and the reliance on community organizations to fund programming for athletics, music, co-curricular activities, pre-kindergarten, and full-day kindergarten. The proposed increase in the 2015 budget has certain fixed or mandated costs. Again, we want to decrease our class size and improve our program. We have students that are needier in 2014 than they were, on average, than in 2009. We've got a significant increase in the needs of our children in Abington, and it's up to our school department to meet those needs. The per pupil cost, in previous years, I've used a comparison of surrounding towns. I just dialed right in. We're still low compared to many communities in terms of our per pupil expenditure. This is the best way to compare apples to apples when you're comparing school departments. There's nothing out of whack in Abington with our budget. The state average per pupil in FY12, because that's the last compiled audit for the state of Massachusetts, the cost for the average pupil in Massachusetts is $13,636. In Abington, the cost has been $11,855, a difference of $1,781. So if per pupil, we received the average amount per pupil, that would increase our budget by $3.4 million. Of importance are our proposed positions. Now, these are not in priority order. I've already identified for you some of the priority in our thinking. These are a list of positions from our schools, and each one of them improves the academic life for our students. When it comes to the Central Elementary School, that's dependent on enrollment in our pre-kindergarten and kindergarten staffing. And there's a little bit of a benefit there because there's some offset with people paying tuition. They don't pay the full cost of a teacher, but it does help offset that. And so what we do is we track the birth rate in Abington, and we do not necessarily anticipate that there'll be a huge influx in our student population for our Central Elementary School. However, as things change in the private pre-kindergarten and kindergarten programs in Abington, any given day, a private could close down or change the number of sections that they offer or raise their prices, in which case we would see an influx. So we watch that. At the Beaverbrook Elementary School, the addition of a grade-two teacher would reduce 24 to 21 students in a class. A grade-three teacher would reduce 25 to 22, and grade-four would reduce 30 to 26. And so you could see there that grade-four, not that grade-two and grade-three aren't concerns of ours, but will come back. And I'm anticipating that you'll see a grade-four rise to the top of that area of need for the Beaverbrook Elementary School. And if you look at the Woodsdale, the Woodsdale School has, in grades five and six, have had class sizes that are too high for the last five years, with 31 and 30. In addition, if a fifth-grade teacher and a sixth-grade teacher would reduce those class sizes to 26. So you can imagine that those will be a priority to us. At the middle school, we have a library that is staffed part-time with a tutor. We believe that a trained library media specialist is the best way to maximize the use of that room as a resource to the school building. We know that's true, and so we're looking to add that at the Frodo Middle School along with a tutor to provide remediation for struggling students at that school building. At Abington High School, a math teacher, which would allow for all high school students to take a four-year math program at Abington High School and allow us the opportunity to improve the AP offering, provide more MCAS remediation, and increase the number of credits in the Year of Calculus. Now, one of the things we will likely return to you with is this is more of a high priority because of the need for Massachusetts students to have four years of math. We've got students at Abington High School who are getting to a time for graduation where we need to provide that additional, those additional math sections before they graduate. We've had those classes migrating through, and we've put this off. But if we add this for next year, those students will have the opportunity for that mass core math program as we try to get our students college-ready. Also, at Abington High School, we've got a high demand for art, and to do art in a way that provides the benefit of technology and using that technology is in high demand and would improve our program of studies. So that is another offering we'd like to add with staff, with a need for staff. We've broken down the art between the high school, the secondary, and the elementary. You'll see later, because as we balance our budget priorities, sometimes there's a need to split positions. So at the district-wide level, on the next slide, you'll see a .6 art teacher to increase the amount of time that our elementary students spend in art, the addition of a music teacher to increase the time they spend in music and improve our music offering. The music tutors are currently being funded by our music boosters. To just assume that they're going to continue to fund that part of the program and provide the instrumental instruction that's needed, I think, would be wrong. At some point, we need to adapt that back into our budget. An instructional technologist for the elementary level. This improves the integration of best-practice use of technology in all of our classrooms. So the use of technology in lesson planning to improve and weave into what students know or are able to do in the areas of technology, to improve the assessments that students are demonstrating they know or what are able to do. With the curriculum, all of that improves if we improve instructionary of technology, and that happens with an instructional technologist. Now, that may seem like we're asking for the moon and the stars, but other districts, like Abington, have these people on their staff. This is not, believe it or not, something that's out of the ordinary. District-wide at the secondary level, another instructional technologist. We've got, you know, hundreds of classrooms that need this type of support across the On the next slide, we see a request for a data analyst. At our last meeting, you saw the tip of the iceberg in terms of data that's available and that we need to make our decisions on. All of that data that you saw actually should be and does get, depending on the area, drilled down to the classroom level. In order to do that, we need to run queries on the data, comparing reading scores, comparing AP scores, comparing grades in classes, comparing those to standardized test scores. And we're moving into the era of PARC that we talked about previously. An ELL teacher, as I stated earlier, our population in Abington has changed and needs the additional support of an English language learner or a teacher for English language learners, a technology trainer. This is technology training and troubleshooting. The software that we are running on our computers and our infrastructure requires quite a bit of, quite a bit more assistance than we're currently getting it. I mean, we are running interactive boards in our classrooms. We're running software for 2,000 students. And to think that we're able to run that with a technology director and a technician and then a part-timer, which is what we currently have, means that on the user end, we're not doing all of the things that kids need to do today in our classrooms. Computer technician to help us with our break-fix and computer repair, a data manager. This is different than a data analyst. This data manager, for every student, we have multiple data fields, plus schedules, plus training, plus certification, plus now the teacher evaluation system. All gets funneled into this massive amount of data that's collected by the Department of Education, and we need to make our decisions. You'll see in this budget, we've got textbook decisions we need to make that spend, you know, $70,000 on a textbook series. Before you spend that much money, the investment of a data manager to make sure that the data that you're using to make those decisions is sound and has integrity is a responsible thing to do. And then a .5 facility manager. We have five aging buildings. We hope to improve that with the construction of a school soon. But the custodians, the grounds, the safety, and the supervision required in that for decades in Abington had that person in place, and we'd like to bring that back. So the positions that you saw here are not the 33 positions that we're still without in Abington. What you see here is a proposal that factors in the times in trying to improve education with a better school system. And so every time you have an opportunity to make a change, you look to improve and update. And so not all of these are just replacement positions for the 33 positions that were lost. They're different because times have changed. We will be spending quite a bit of time as an administrative team deliberating based on the information we have, some of the data that you saw in our previous meeting, about what our priorities are with these positions. We'll start that out in our next meeting as a group, as an administrative group. What you see here now is a summary page of the increases by major category from FY2014 to the proposed preliminary budget in FY15. So the $22.2 million preliminary budget. In the differences in the accounts, this is the page that people like to spend a lot of time on because it's our summary page. In terms of contractual obligations across the district, we are expecting a $560,245 increase. The new and restored positions that you saw come to $898,130 for a total salary account increase of one point, of just over $1.4 million. In terms of technology, this budget recognizes that in order to be ready for the PARC test that all systems in Massachusetts will be giving to our students, that's going to be required by the state, where we have a far better computer ratio than we have now, it's going to take us approximately half a million dollars to upgrade the system to be ready for that. So in this budget, we cut it in half and added a quarter of a million dollars because it wouldn't be responsible for us to request that money so that we can best be prepared for that. Programs of the district, this number will change. It could go up or down on a daily basis, but at this point, we're anticipating a special education increase of $445,268. We took what I would consider, at this point, hopefully, a conservative approach with circuit breaker and increased the amount of circuit breaker offset by $90,861 for a total increase of programs of the districts of $354,407. Continuing on, we look at the athletic and the music program because, again, we have large portions of our music and our sports and our co-curricular that are funded by our parents. And for a public school system to require people to do that so their kids can play subvarsity sports or have the experience in music that we want to offer them is not what we want to be doing in public schools. So the cost of subvarsity athletics, it's being funded by our sports boosters, is $28,025. This preliminary budget looks to replace that and put those funds back in our budget. New programming is the addition. Your program needs to change for your kids if you're going to be up-to-date in offering the activities that kids want to participate in. So this is for an indoor track program, a JV lacrosse, and for the ultimate frisbee stipends that are required to run those programs for kids. And then the athletic expenses are the increases in transportation and other game expenses for those types of activities. And then the music tutors and then stipends for other co-curricular activities, Color Guard, that our music parents pay for, again, those music tutors, the total there is $14,987. And so that's a total increase of $53,991. Other school services, the transportation contract, later in this agenda, Felicia will be asking you to vote on renewing that contract. That contract goes up 2.5 percent, which is an $11,019 increase, which is a good-going rate for transportation contracts these days. So we know that number. Special education transportation, a modest anticipated increase because this number changes at any given day. $9,551 for a total of $20,570 in that area. Instruction, textbooks and curriculum support, this would be an increase of $176,332. Again, in our last meeting, you had quite a bit of information, especially in the area of math and science, where we need to make some improvements. Not that the other areas won't get textbooks, but we have, I won't be surprised if we come back and we have a high priority for those two curriculum areas. Fixed act assets for portable classrooms for the Woodsdale School of $340,000. Now, if you, if somebody were to write a check tonight for $340,000, I would not recommend putting portables at the Woodsdale tomorrow. However, if we build out the teaching staff like we need to at the elementary level between now and when we would hope build a school in the future, whether we build a school in the future or not, we need to reduce class sizes, and our students in Abington would need portable classroom space. I would imagine that this will fall to a lower priority in our budget, though, because obviously, we need to put teachers in front of kids first. For a total proposed increase of $2.6 million or 13.5 percent for that $22.2 million preliminary budget. This current budget is a $19.5 million budget. And so this, again, we'll spend quite a bit of time and hope to come back to this group with more of a prioritized order for these things. I think it's important, though, that what is communicated here isn't high in the sky. It's, if you look at any one of these things, they're about improving the environment for the kids we serve, and that's it. And if you can find something other than that, you know, let us know because it's not there, and we could have that discussion. In terms of what the priorities will be, we'll come back. Certainly, I want to take any questions that people may have, though.
Do you have questions?
No, I think Peter's answered most of the questions.
I should say that, although we had an initial meeting of a budget and finance subcommittee, that was a little preliminary because this hasn't necessarily been referred to that committee yet. That's Mike and Paul, and I thank you for your time on that. We had that preliminary meeting, and we exchanged five or six different emails with multiple questions back and forth between Felicia and I and Mike and Paul. And, you know, hopefully, tonight, we're going to, I'm going to ask you to refer this to the subcommittee so that we'll have more meetings in the coming weeks.
I just had a question, just to clarify, and maybe I just misunderstood. If we were to build a new school, we will not be needing portable classrooms?
No.
I think that
Right.
Is, we want to make that very clear, that if we, you know, if a new building does come, our students would not be in portable classrooms?
No.
They would be able to eliminate overcrowding with our buildings we currently have.
We currently have an overcrowding situation at the elementary level. Later in the agenda, we'll talk about school choice. I'll only recommend that to you for the high school level because that's the only place we have room. And if we build a new building, the soonest our students would be in it is 2017, and that would provide relief to the entire district. So this would be an interim gap till we got to the point where we build a new school. If we don't build a new school, we absolutely need portable classrooms. We absolutely need to do that. And that would be the most efficient and cost-effective way to address the overcrowding. It would be a terrible solution, but it would be better than any other solution that any other school system I'm ever aware of would use to provide the environments we need.
I have another question, just to clarify. Under athletics and music, putting back in what we graciously have donated year after year from the boosters, both music and athletics, parents, new programming, don't we have ultimate frisbee now?
We have ultimate frisbee, great question. We have ultimate frisbee right now as a club. And so the number of times it would travel and compete, it's becoming a sport. And so that needs to be reflected in the stipend for the coach and then also the cost of transportation. And then the JV lacrosse would provide the coaching staff for the JV program for lacrosse. We do have lacrosse right now.
Okay.
But what we need is a JV coach.
Okay.
Or requesting is a JV coach. And then the other piece is an indoor track component added in there, which we don't have an indoor track. They would, I should, to be clear, they
We're not looking to build an indoor track.
They would be going to, away to an indoor track for that, those competitions.
Okay. Things important, I think, as you said, that's very preliminary in the beginning stage. We'll continue to look at it and find who are the best of the students.
The reason it's preliminary is because we open the end of August. Major concern is getting kids into classes and schedules. Our administrators need that time also to collect the information from their school councils and from our parents. And then, so that takes till about Thanksgiving, then it comes here. And so we don't have town meeting till April, May, or June. And so, and again, as you get closer to town meeting, the more confident you are in your numbers, anyway.
Does anyone have any other questions, either about the preliminary budget?
So as far as the process goes, right now, we've got a preliminary budget, but the school committee is still going to kick it around, look at the numbers, ask more questions of you and Felicia and whoever else before a number actually will go to the town?
Yes.
Do we have a timeframe of when we?
I'm hopeful that by the end of this month or by the February meeting, we'll be able to submit a preliminary number to the town. Because even though we submit that number at the end of January or February, that number that we submit is likely to change as we approach town meeting. Because parallel to this process, and I've talked to the town manager about taking this approach, we've communicated with the town, and we have good communication with the town, I should mention that. Parallel to that process is estimating what the insurance is going to cost for the town of Abington, what the receipts are going to be for next year. Exercise of Abington, what the receipts are going to be for next year, excise taxes, property to, you know, value assessments and taxes. And so, on the town side of the house, all of those things are happening as we approach-
And local aid from the-
And the chapter 70 money, local aid that's coming from the state. We don't know what any of those numbers are yet. And so, that also takes place while we prioritize our budget needs. And then hopefully, when we get to town meeting in April, May or June, on a good year it's April, some years it's as late as June, then we have a consensus budget and the town meeting hopefully votes for that and then we move forward in the next fiscal year. If we don't have consensus, then with the finance committee review of all of this, then town meeting decides.
Can I just, you had mentioned, there were 33 less positions today than there were in 2008, 2008, 2009. But how many of those are, as you said, you know, making sure you have teachers in front of the kids? How many of those are teaching positions versus, you know, what some might consider a little more on the administrative side?
There are, there's a deficit of nine, I'm sorry, of nine teachers at the high school, three at the middle school, about 15 at the elementary level. There's been, we're up two in terms of kindergarten. Counseling staff has increased, our special education, I'm sorry, our special education counselor number has increased. And again, that's based on the needs of our students. We're down eight, paraprofessionals.
But we're looking at like the nine, three and the 15, we're looking at 27 teaching positions. Does that, does the student enrollment correlate to what it was back in 2008, 2009 as far as the need for that many positions or is it, you know, we might need 22 today versus 27 what we may have needed, you know, as far as the head comes for our students go?
I would say in terms of the student population, student population is down like other communities in Massachusetts. Massachusetts is seeing erosion of school age children. There isn't a wholesale exodus from Abington. Our numbers in terms of students leaving or coming or going has stabilized and it's back to what it was before. It's more about an aging population in Massachusetts and people leaving the area. In terms of number of teachers, especially at the secondary level, there are fewer students. I would say at the elementary level, we've maintained pretty much what we've had over the years. And so, at the secondary level, we wouldn't necessarily need as many back as we had in 2008 and 2009. But we certainly need, we do need secondary teachers to implement the program that we lost. Because some of the needs, the number of staff are to have the same number of sections and offerings in terms of advanced placement or the science offerings or, you know, because regardless of the number of pupils in the classroom at the secondary level, if you're going to have AP bio and AP chemistry and you want to offer those things as a public school system, you need to have those sections available to put kids in them. Have I done it?
Right.
May I answer the question?
Yeah, so if you're looking at, you know, fourth, fifth and sixth grade, if we have 30-plus kids in those classes now.
Right.
Even if we, this budget, preliminary budget was, you know, had one teacher at those, I mean, to get to where we were in 2008, 2009, we really need probably six.
Seven, I'm sorry?
Correct, correct.
To get to where we were back then, we probably need six, possibly seven teachers to get-
Classroom teachers, yeah.
The size.
Yep.
Yep. In page seven of the budget book, it has that class size data and-
Okay, yeah. Yeah, because I was just looking at what was in here and I was saying, okay, 2008 sizes, you know, you're talking, you know, there were 25, 23 students in a fourth grade class back then. We have 30 there now.
Let me try to say this the right way.
And all we're, I don't mean that, but all you're asking for now is to say, just give us, please, just give us at least one more teacher to help get the down. You're not asking for the world, you're just asking for additional teacher at each grade level, fourth, fifth and sixth.
Right.
So they don't have to go into class with 30-plus kids.
And dare to say, 2008, 2009 were the good old days. Because even back then, I mean, we were a lean operation then. So we had to cut from the meat of this organization.
I think it's to note too, that even though the numbers are slightly lower at the high school, there are teachers we need there just to have the kids graduate. The kids have to take four years of math.
Right.
Our ELL at the high, I mean, Dipna presented that last month, is through the groups. And we have to provide services for those students. So it's not just in math, I mean, that's, right, to survive.
The key is the programming, is the enrollment, especially at the high school level, the enrollment isn't as important as it is the programming. So you've heard, you know, Principal Sullivan talk about the math core requirements that are needed to get into your state colleges and universities and what that means. And then we, you know, Mike always asks about AP courses, but if we don't have the staff, do you know what I mean? It's kind of like we limit our programs and that's where we lose people because then families choose to go elsewhere if we're not able to provide that at the secondary level. So it's less about enrollment at the secondary. It's very important about with enrollment at the elementary level.
Right.
But less, but it's more about programming.
Yeah, so at the secondary level, you're going to have class sizes that are going to be smaller.
Right.
But you need to be able to offer a variety of different programs.
Correct.
You don't need the nine staff that we had, you know, that we lost, just the one and four, because us didn't have down in the morning.
As far as the district wide, like the data analyst, just so I, I'm clear on this, the data analyst, technical trainer, computer technician, data manager, those are more of what you call administrative positions. They're not going to be in front of students.
Support.
Support, yes.
Support positions, not administrative really at all in function, but classroom, teacher support.
Well, as far as the budget goes, you'd probably put them in an administrative position. They're not going to be in front of students.
Well, they don't have a supervisory role.
They'd be an instruction.
In terms of life, health, safety of school environment, so I wouldn't call them administration because I think administration supervises, evaluates. I see them as more of curriculum people.
Okay, but I'm just thinking about on the budget, where do they fall? They're not going to be under, they're not going to be educating students.
Support, support staff.
Right, right. And it just, because there's many more requirements today than there ever has been as far as collecting this data and getting-
I think you're mixing up the two, is because the data person that's just going to be looking at the numbers is different from an instructional data person that's actually going to be working with staff, training and then students working through. So I think that's where he might be getting-
Some people have, some people on that list have a break fix for computers.
Right.
Technician role. Some people have a trainer role, professional development role, and another person would have a data management and a data analytics role. So those are the, really, the responsibilities of the different types of positions there.
Right, I mean, a data analyst, the way you described, and a data manager are going to be in a support role.
Right, right.
Where a technical trainer may be in front of others to help.
What you're saying is if you prioritize that, you would view in front of kids and with staff a more higher priority versus the others, if I'm hearing you.
Well, I don't know, I mean, because I don't know what the state requires. I mean, if we have to get this data in, we got to, I mean, and that's where, you know, it hurts the school department because it's like, you know, it's another unfunded mandate, you have to get this information in. Well, it's going to take funds from the classroom and put again to, which, and I don't use the term administratively because that's what I think a lot of people say, oh, there's so much administration there. Well, you know, it's required.
And the data doesn't feel like a big deal until your class ranks are off, somebody misses a scholarship at some college, you're not able to make good decisions about curriculum and spend tens of thousands of dollars on textbooks because the data's flawed. The data's important because we're basing decisions on it.
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments?
Can I just, as far as on the increase, the contractual obligations? That went from, it was like $374,000 last year to $560 this year. Someone just kind of explained-
One is that next year's contractual increases, one and a quarter percent, this year was 1 percent. And then there was also a consolidation of steps and lanes. The first phase of that consolidation is part of the teacher contract. And in addition, in last year's increase by major category page, there was contractual and then there was 150E line for contracts that hadn't been funded, hadn't been settled yet. And I think that was, that was an additional 80, no, that was an additional, is it 80,000? I'm sorry, take that back. There was two, additional teacher and then the contractual obligations of 443, 471 last year.
And under the current contract that we have, if you remember, there was zero in there, one in there, one and a quarter, and it ramps up through the life of the contract. Hopefully, in the agreement was that as it ramps up, as we hopefully get into a better economic time. And so, there was, there is that increase as we move through this contract. That pays people the competitive wage for teachers in southeastern Massachusetts. The average salary for what the job they perform gets on the open market.
And I wasn't here for this, but this was the contract and it was put out there, was put before the selectmen, they reviewed it and, you know, gave it a once-over and thought it was, you know, a good deal for the town and for, it was a fair deal for the town and to the teachers.
I think, I think the philosophy of paying people the going rate for the job they do is a good philosophy if you want to get people to do a good job.
I think just as you mentioned, Paul, you weren't on the board yet, but they, they were right in line with all of the other union contracts within the town also.
And as far as the programs of other districts, the special education tuition, that's one line item, if I understand from you, that can just fluctuate. We have really no control over it.
Correct.
Correct.
Someone comes in the district-
It's going to change tomorrow because somebody called today and they're moving in. So it changes always.
Day to day.
Right. So if we look at this preliminary budget proposal, just with those two items, that's a 4.1 percent increase. We haven't added anything yet.
Right. We will be adding ELL, we don't have a choice anymore.
Yeah.
So that's going to be top priority on that list, just so, just want to put it out there.
Oh, no, you've made that perfectly clear. And the thing is, it's the law.
Right.
I mean, we don't have any real choice here.
Actually, that isn't even a mandate of the Department of Education, that's a mandate of the Department of Justice.
Well, I just want to, I'm sorry, I just want to go back to last year's contractual increase because you put out a number. This year for FY14, the contractual obligations between the preliminary budget at the beginning of the process last January and when we did our final increase right before town meeting, we had settled all contracts. So the increase for this year is $443,000 for FY12, for FY14, sorry, FY14. The total was 400 and-
So 374 was just a preliminary?
That was, it's, yeah, it was 374 and then there was a second line under there that said 150E, that was an enablement to bargain with the groups that hadn't been settled yet.
Oh, okay.
So those two combined end up being the 443.
Less of a gap than you see between 14 and 15?
Right.
So if we look at year two and three of the contract, that contractual obligations, what do we expect that to look like?
This, FY15 is the third year of the collective bargaining agreement.
We'll have to go back to the contracts.
So we'll have to be negotiating, this time next year, we'll be negotiating a new teacher contract.
And you can join us, Paul.
Do you believe he's on the subject?
Yeah, I agree.
It's good times.
Appreciate the questions.
So, we're all set on that, we need, I'd be looking for a motion for us to come out of public hearing to enter into a regular scheduled school committee meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Mike, Kathy, Alteva.
Do you want me to jump to the requests for action on the budget and then go back to the agenda?
We can submit those all together because the, do you mean the submission of the article?
So based on, so based on the discussion that we just had, now that we're back in the regular session, I would ask if someone would be willing to make a motion to refer the FY2015 preliminary budget to the business finance subcommittee?
Go further. I'll second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Then skip the recommended action to make a motion to submit this number to the town as we talked about and jump to the next one, which we haven't talked about yet, but I think you are probably anticipating this one because it's one that you've seen before, is, the next one is a motion to submit for the annual town meeting, warrant a proposal figure of $14,000 as an amount requested for student transportation services to Abington students attending out-of-district vocational schools as non-resident students for the 2014-15 school year. The school committee or their designees shall be authorized to expend from this fund or act on anything relative thereto. We need this account in order to pay for the vocational transportation to Norfolk Aggie and this is the amount that it costs as Felicia runs that consortium of districts shipping kids to Walpole for that experience, which is where the school is. So if someone would be willing, if you have questions about that, if someone would be willing to make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
And then the next one would be a motion to submit for the annual town meeting, a warrant article to continue our evolving account in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half. Set account to be funded by the fines levied against Abington businesses which violate state or local tobacco control laws, bylaws and regulations to be expended by the Abington School Department to fund substance abuse prevention programs, not to exceed $8,000 for the ensuing fiscal year or take any other action relative thereto. We use this for everything from, you know, we use it for guest speakers, for our nurses' offices, for substance abuse cigarette, tobacco fines. Seems to be the appropriate way to spend that money on our health classes for kids to not pick up that habit, things like that. So I'd ask for that motion?
Make a motion.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
And it's the budget portion.
Hearing no visitors? Seeing none, we'll move right on to the reading and approval of our records, our November 4th, 2013 school committee meeting minutes. Anyone have a chance to take a look at them? I'm sorry, December 10th, 2013 school committee meeting, regular meeting. Anyone like to, if there's no questions or amendments or a motion to approve them?
Make a motion.
I'll second it.
Alteva? Our December 2nd meeting, which was the joint meeting from the Abington School Committee and the Abington Board of Selectmen for our feasibility study submission. We can have a motion to approve those minutes as presented or if there's any amendments needed?
I'll make the motion.
Mike?
Second.
Kathy? Alteva? Your Court of Superintendent of Schools.
Under other matters, I won't be asking for a vote on this tonight. I'll bring it to the next school committee meeting so people have time. If you see it on cable, if you have questions about it, or if committee members have questions tonight or over the coming weeks. For the last couple of years, we've opted to allow students to enter into the Abington Public Schools under school choice. If you as a committee don't vote- I'll bring it to the next school committee meeting so people have time. If you see it on cable, if you have questions about it, or if the committee members have questions tonight or over the coming weeks. For the last couple of years, we've opted to allow students to enter into the Abington Public Schools under school choice. If you, as a committee, don't vote us out of it, we're in it. So we need to be, if we're going to do it, we need to be specific about what we're going to do with it, or the state would consider us in it for all grades. What I'm going to recommend is that we accept choice students in grade nine only for their four-year high school experience here in Abington because we have the room for them in Abington High School. And just like we talked about earlier, it helps to improve our program offering for all students because we're, we're filling those sections at our high school with students and able to hopefully accept all of the valedictorians from other communities to Abington. That's the goal. But there's in your packet a outline of what's given to the community, what's posted on our website. It outlines the application process. There's a deadline for people of June second, two thousand and fourteen. And then if we get more than five students, which we should, we want to cap it at five for now, we would have a lottery for those students. We currently have two students in Abington that are choice students at Abington High School. And so at our next meeting, one of the things I plan on doing is recommending that we would continue this. Certainly open for any questions people might have.
And choice counts just on September, correct? They can't decide how early--
We started in September because--
Or August for us.
Right. We want to make, we, we want to, we want to capture students that have a full four-year experience at Abington High School rather than kids that may be transient and coming and going and were just sort of a stop-off. We want to offer a full four-year program for students.
East Bridgewater has school choice. Do they see with the new, the opening of the new school, more applications?
I, I mean, I don't, I haven't asked that question specifically. I'd be shocked if any school that doesn't build a new school and has choice, if they don't see an increase in, in those opportunities.
And that is typically, they, they, there is a cap, though.
Yes.
Is five kind of the norm?
No. We're, we're really still sort of new to this market because we haven't experienced more than, than the two students we have. So we really kind of want to get five under our belt. And then if you add five one year and they stay, and then you add five more, you're at ten and five and so on. And so we'll, we'll walk up to this.
So we currently have two. How many do we, how many students have we lost in school choice to other districts?
It is a small number. I don't know if the number, I could give you a ballpark at five or six, but that's a, a memory of, of reading it on a, on a sheet that was provided at one point. We also have charter school students, a small number of those students that go to the South Shore Charter School. But I don't, I don't--
But that's not really considered school choice.
Yeah. No, that's not choice, but they, they opt out.
They opt out.
Um, but it's not a large number.
Okay.
It doesn't involve transportation, so it's not, not something people jump to do.
Terry Sullivan, the principal of the high school, for people that, she doesn't have a microphone, people are home. Her answer was, it doesn't involve transportation. So that's a sacrifice for family. That's quite a commitment, a travel commitment daily to get a student to school on time. So that's a disincentive.
Peter, I have a question. What if somebody moved into Southfield up at the base?
They could opt to come in?
Yep.
Anybody that wants to provide that transportation?
Right, because they could live anywhere. It's a choice for them to come here.
Right.
But they wouldn't be, where Abington and Rockland and Waymouth are involved in Southfield, it would still be part of this.
It would still be choice.
Oh, so they don't, oh, what you're saying is, do they have to go to Waymouth? They could choose.
Right.
Well, they would be originally assigned to Waymouth.
Right.
But in, again, in Massachusetts, you can choose to go someplace else to a school that has that choice option, and they could choose that. Some other questions other than? On the, at our previous meeting, there was a question about an update on bullying prevention across the district. Dr. Thomas has that information.
Yes, and all the principals are here too. So if anyone has specific questions, I'm going to give an overall because there's a variety of activities and programs that go on throughout the district. In terms of, there's anti-bullying clubs, we have bullying surveys that are conducted, peer mediation and mentor groups, students view situational videos, they role-play, and then they discuss how to handle situations. Guest speakers, school-wide positive behavior programs, a lot of them. Check and connect programs, where as adults check in and connect with students on how things are going. Train staff through the Massachusetts Aggression and Reduction Center. That's through Bridgewater State University. So we have staff that are trained, and we also have programs and presentations through Mark. Champions of Destiny presentations, character education, civic responsibility programs, principal positive phone calls to families, points for character, care center focus on community support activities, et cetera. And then we have student councils. And finally, we also have partnerships with the Abington Police Department regarding bullying prevention. So basically, there's a variety of those that go on. If we do have a child that is a repeated offender or in crisis or what have you, the process is to go through the student support teams to have those conversations, also determine next steps, whether we're adding support services or we're also looking at possible FBAs, which are functional behavior assessments that could be conducted on what is the root of the cause. And then if we've, if we've exhausted everything, then the next step would then be to follow the consequences that are built into the bullying and intervention policy. So there's a lot going on that the administrators and the teachers and everybody have in place. Fortunately, you know, we don't have a bullying problem per se. However, bullying exists, so it's a matter of educating our kids, our staff and everyone on it.
I should, at this point, when you say that, I'm looking across the room at the people that do all of this with the bullying and spend all of their time with these issues, and our principals do a great job with it. And that's also reminding me that I should thank them for the budget information that we provided you tonight too because we're going to spend a lot of time with it. I know I can count on them to not think of their school buildings, but think of the kids as in a district. And so I just wanted to make sure I said that, so.
How many individuals have we had go through the mass aggression, mass aggression reduction center?
We have trained staff at every school. I don't know the exact numbers, but I know we have trained staff at every school.
So have we had the trained staff train others?
Yeah, it's the train the trainer model.
Right. So who, any ballpark as far as how many are involved in that?
I don't know, I know that we have--
In full, I suppose.
Yeah.
No, we have a couple of middle school.
Now, in the policy, it talks about educators, it goes through them. Educators, administrators, counselors, school nurses, custodians, bus drivers, paraprofessionals. Does everybody get training on, and bullying in those groups that are in the policy? I mean, it's not just administrators in it, because you have school nurses, you have custodians, the bus drivers. I mean, how do, how do we--
They're all trained in, you know, to reduce aggression. They're trained on the policy.
Okay.
Everyone signs off on it. I understand the policy. I understand my responsibilities as a staff member, a bus driver, a captain, if they have to sign off, that they have been trained.
All right, so is that something that's maintained in a personnel file or?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
All right. Even the bus drivers?
They're not, the bus drivers aren't employees of Abington. They're employees of first student. So they are, they do know our policy. It's gone over with the first student in their employment meetings, but we wouldn't have a personnel file on--
Is that part of the contract, though? Do we refer it to our bullying policy in our contract that they need to?
Bullying is law, so it's across the board in the trainings, so.
Right, but, but our, we may have something in our policy that goes above what the law says. So I just, do we refer it to?
We haven't. We have, our, actually, our contract is three years old, so it's prior to our adoption of the, of the--
But they cover it, but because they cover so many towns, I mean, it would go back to whichever town you're speaking to. So the bus drivers are, you know, you can have kids from Abington, Rockland, Waymouth, and everybody will have a slightly different policy, but it's all based on the law. But then if there are things that, you know, during the trainings, only because I've been involved in North River training, I have attended the trainings that they do for buses, bus drivers. I did that years ago, and so it was, you, it's just like what we do here for new teachers. We basically tell them everything in a day, and we hope that they absorb something. And then basically, as the year goes on, then they know that they're signed off, that we have mentors, that we're working through that. And the same thing with bus. And then I know that I specifically do it when we have compliance pieces, so that you have your annuals. But then we even go into more depth when we have audits. So that, you know, I met specifically with the whole custodial staff in the district. I met specifically with, you know, everybody.
Okay.
So that, so there's those extra levels. But annually, it's done for everybody, but then there are specific groups that have a slightly different piece just because of the nature of their roles within the district.
So the bus drivers, that's a little bit different just because they're on the contract with somebody else.
Correct.
But everybody else in the district, you know, as far as the custodians, the nurses, the paraprofessionals, they're all--
Absolutely.
But a part of our contract with the bus company in the RFP is that training is provided by the bus company in not only bullying, but there are other things that they need to be trained in. For medical emergencies, for supervision of safety, management of the bus. I mean, you know, everything from rail, from crossing seven at-grade level railroad crossings in Abington, you name it. There's a lot that they have to be ready for.
And it's the same with contracts that we have with special ed schools because we have a variety of special ed students that go to a variety of different special ed schools. And yet, everybody follows the bullying law, but they have students that come from everywhere within the Commonwealth. So it still goes back to the same protocols.
Can I just make one request? That we update the most recent policy that was approved on October twenty-second on the website? Because we have the old one out there.
Absolutely. Any other questions on the bullying? North River Collaborative Annual Report. Kathy, you agreed to help us with that, and I think you also have the quarterly report.
Okay. The quarterly report actually was put together in November, but we did not have a meeting in November. And-- We can take a copy. So basically, I'm going to take a look at both things together. The quarterly report covers a lot of what's in the annual report because the annual report covers the two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen school year. You'll notice under programs and services, it talks about professional development that they provide for district staff as well as their own staff. And there is a list of things that they accomplished. Educator evaluation training, analyzing teaching for student results, studying skillful teaching, assessment strategies, and because we're a member of North River Collaborative, these trainings are open to our staff. It also lists a lot of their programs and services. And where they list them on the quarterly report, they're described more in detail in their annual report. So for instance, if you want to know about Independence Academy, which is for students at risk of substance abuse, it's over in Brockton. But within the annual report, it describes it in more detail, what actually takes place there. At the bottom, their programs include serving students with multiple disabilities, autism development disabilities, emotional disabilities, substance abuse and dependence. Those again are described more in detail in the annual report. They also have a program of community-based vocational training. We actually make ser, make use of their services for English language learners, which they're also trying to increase in size. Therapies, social work interns and transportation. And those things are all described more in detail in the annual report. There's also information both in the annual report and in the sheet that I just gave you on technology. They've implemented with the Southeast Collaborative Regional Organization a common professional development web-based application to support thirty-five school districts and collaboratives, which is a great opportunity. Student enrollment is as they have predicted. So the budget figures and what is the enrollment are matching at this point in time. They were audited, the financial audit came through, everything was fine. It mentions grants. Part of their mission is to do some work with grants. We have had participated in the physical education grant, which ended in December. So that will no longer be there. They have applied for a grant with Abington as the lead school for a professional practice innovation grant, which will work on district, district determined measures, which is part of the new evaluation system. And they've applied for a Title III consortium grant dealing with homeschool connections for English language learners and professional development for teachers. And as a level three school, we're going to be looking at a lot of training for English language learners next year. As far as legislation is concerned, the collaborative bill agreement was approved by all school members. And DESI, I believe, now has appointed someone or is in the process of appointing a board member. Because on the board of collaboratives now, there is supposed to be a member from the, from DESI. A couple of things I wanted to point out in the annual report itself. If you look at page ten, it's a section on English language learners, what they're doing, how they're being trained, things that you'll probably hear coming up next year as we start to go into process of training for English language learners. WIDA and ACCESS are the acronyms that are being used. When you hear those, you know what we're talking about, is going, training for English language learners. And our numbers are growing rapidly. Another thing you might want to take a look at, on page eighteen is the Community Innovation Challenge Grant, some of the grants. And on page nineteen, cooperative purchasing of goods and services, which are things that, you know, as a member school, we can participate in. For those people who like to look at costs, page twenty-seven takes all their financial information and puts it into a nice graph that is kind of a little easier to follow. Revenue up top and expenses down the bottom. And you can see that they balance fairly well. And what I found really interesting was on pages twenty-eight and twenty-nine, they compare the cost of the programs at North River to the average cost of the same programs in other compar, comparable programs. And if you'll notice, the cost at North River is below the average cost of the comparable programs. So there's a lot of other detailed information in here, but those were a few things that I thought might be interesting to take a look at. And if anyone has any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them or I will take them back to the next board meeting next week and try to get your answers for you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Under dates to remember? Under dates to remember, this evening was the meeting, or is currently going on for the Green Earth Boosters at the Abington Police Station. And then Tuesday, January fourteenth, the Abington Music Parents will be meeting at Abington High School at seven P.M. Monday, January twentieth, is Martin Luther King Day. All school offices and buildings will be closed. On Tuesday, January twenty-eighth, we anticipate a change in the regular school committee meeting at seven P.M. We were talking about that. It will, it might be Thursday of that week, which is the thirtieth. We will hopefully con-- We will hopefully confirm that following this meeting, and we'll certainly post that and publish that once we have that confirmed. And then Friday, January 31st, is an in-service early release date. Report of the Assistant Superintendent of Schools.
Can I just ask a question on the dates to remember? As far as the subcommittee, finance subcommittee?
Yep.
Those have to be posted?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we've tried to do it in the past.
No decisions, there's no votes taken or decisions made.
Right.
It would be more informationally that we would...
But people can attend it.
People can attend.
But only meeting law, or they have to post it?
I thought, like a double check.
Yeah. It doesn't hurt.
I thought they did, but...
Yeah.
Can I go? My first item is the MSBA feasibility study update. In December, the architect along with the owner's project manager successfully submitted Phase Two of our, of our feasibility study to the MSBA. We got a little bit of feedback from MSBA in that they were very impressed with the report itself and the, the research that was done and the investigation that was done by the committee and by the professional team. We also had a visit by a member of the MSBA in December who wanted to come and actually see Abington High School and, and be able to report back to MSBA the concerns that around renovation option of Abington High School. And we had a nice visit with him, and he, he agreed with the preferred option of a, of building a new pre-K, five through 12 with a pre-K building. We're anticipating an invitation to the January 29th MSBA board meeting, and once we have that, we'll let you know that. And at that meeting, if everyone agrees with our report, which everything has led, leads us to believe that they will, we'll be invited into the third phase, which is the schematic design phase. And that's when the building is actually designed. The location on the site, which will be at the Abington High School site, what the building will look like. And they do a lot of work in that schematic design phase. It'll also be an opportunity during that phase that we'll have a number of public forums for the community to, to come out and ask questions and recommendations and give feedback into the design. We're still on track for a, for this fall to have a special town meeting around the building of that school. Coupled with that good news has been Abington High School's, our, our challenges with the roof at Abington High School over the... He was there? Yes, I made sure that he knew that we had an active leak going on in one of the classrooms at Abington High School. Over the last three weeks, we have had four somewhat significant leaks in different, actually in all different parts of the building through the, the rain and the snow and the freezing, the frost that we've had. We, I am happy to report that we've been able to have those, each of those repaired with little interior damage at, at that point. And, you know, that's about timing. It's, it's that someone's in the building at that time, that usually, if it's at night, the custodian sees it, or a teacher during the day sees it. We were also able to use that building envelope money from Fall Town Meeting that we're able to change some of the language of. We've been able to use that to make those repairs. We've also actually had issues at, with the roof at Woodsdale School as well, which is, which is also an aging roof. And we've had, we've had leaks there recently in the last few weeks, and we've been able to do those repairs as well. FY14 budget update. We continue to monitor our expenditures for FY14, and, and I can say at this point that I'm cautiously optimistic that with the budget frost that we've had, that we've been implementing this year, that, that we'll successfully get through FY14. But, but like we've continually said, special ed is a absolutely moving target, and that's the one area that we really, we make our best guesses at any given time. And my third item is, has to do with the extension of the bus contract with First Student, where this is our third year of a three-year bus contract with First Student. We went out in a competitively bid process with Whitman Hansen Regional School District, making, they, they run 20-something buses during the day. We, our largest school run 12, so combining that in proximity, because we're close to each other, we have, they, we bid it out with one bus site, and it was, I think it was a successful bid three years ago. Part of the procurement of that bus contract was that, it was a three-year contract, this is the third year, and there were two, two one-year options onto the end of that. So we're, I'm asking for a vote to extend the bus contract for one of those, of the first year of the two-year option. The increase is 2.5% from First Student, which is, which is very good. The concern is often when you go out to bid on a new bus contract is that that's the time that you see 7, 8, 9, 10% increases. So I'm very comfortable recommending to you a 2.5%, to go with that 2.5% increase and not take the chance of going out to rebid.
And then next year, we would reevaluate at the same time?
Correct. Yep. They've actually already given us our pricing for, it's 2.5% for both of the two years. I'm just, I'm suggesting voting the first year of the one-year contract, and then, you know, depending what the environment is this time next year, we, I may recommend to you to, to exercise that second year of the option or to, to go out to bid again, but...
Do you want to give the language?
Yeah, it's, 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 it's just going to be that motion to accept the FY15 contract extension for regular education for student transportation.
Make the motion.
It's just going to take out 16.
Janette Nellin?
Yep. Alteza? Thanks, Felicia. New business is establishing on our next school committee meeting date, which, as Peter previously mentioned, will not be Tuesday, January 28th due to a conflict, and we will settle that date and have it posted soon.
According to the open meeting law.
Anything else to you?
Nope.
Okay. So then I'd like to, by roll call vote, to move into executive session for the purpose of discussing administrators' contracts and not return to public session. Mike, Ellen, myself, Paul?
Yes.
And Kathy. Thank you.